Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Perry Municipal Authority. Today's date is September 3rd, 2019. It is 6:15 PM. Dixie, if you could call roll, please.
Collier, Bond.
Here.
Dillbeck.
Here.
Payher.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
White.
Here.
Morrell.
Here.
Wines.
Here.
Strower.
I do declare a quorum. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Peter Olson from the Zion Lutheran Church and other churches as well, but that's the one I believe that's the most local one, so.
It is local.
Peter, thank you so much for being here.
I bet. Let us pray. "Gracious God, you are before us. You are inviting us into the promise of your kingdom. You are behind us. You are moving us to trust your promise. We bless you for your spirit in our midst. We bless you for the experience of being together. We bless you for the relationships and shared vision growing during these days. For those preparing for this council meeting, we give you thanks. For those carefully digesting what has been offered, reading, studying, and thinking of alternatives, we give you thanks. For those engaging in conversation, in listening, in speaking, in keeping this process moving, we give you thanks. For those now charged with responsibilities to bring these goals, these plans, and possibilities to fruition, we give you thanks. Encourage us steadfast, God, so all of our living becomes giving in the name of your beloved Jesus Christ, and all of our giving becomes a renewed and joyous life for all through the gift of Christ's liberating grace, who is with us on the move towards your bright horizon. We pray in your holy name. Amen."
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There is one item listed under there.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bond.
Yes.
Dillbeck.
Yes.
Payher.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Moving down to item number four, comments from those assembled pertaining to items on the PMA agenda. Seeing none, item number five, proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing board. Counsel? Seeing none, we'll move to item six. Is there any new business to be brought before the Perry Municipal Authority? Seeing none, we'll move to item seven, a motion to adjourn from someone?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Bond.
Yes.
Dillbeck.
Yes.
Payher.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. At this time, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, September 3rd, 2019, at 6:18 PM. Roll call, please. Dixie?
Collier. Bond.
Here.
Dillbeck.
Here.
Payher.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
White.
Here.
Morrell.
Here.
Wines.
Here.
Strower.
I do declare a quorum. First item is the consent agenda. There are three items listed under the consent agenda. You can approve all three at one time, or we can pull one or two out, or whatever you'd like to do to discuss for.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Dixie?
Bond.
Yes.
Dillbeck.
Yes.
Payher.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Item number four, comments from those assembled pertaining to items on the city agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to item five, proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by or to the governing body. Seeing none, we'll move to item six, city manager remarks. Larry, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to make some comments about tomorrow's funeral. A little background, last Thursday, Chief Thomas, Chief Brandon, City Clerk Dixie Johnson, Street Superintendent Sam Harmon, Cemetery Sexton, Laura Lee Flam, members of the Perry American Legion Post. We met at City Hall with Rebecca Rains and Ashley Heath from Brown Duggar, so that we could work on the issues that we thought might come about, have a plan, in case we do have a large turnout for tomorrow, which we think we will. I did want to say that parking will be available at Perry Plaza. Buses from Kincaid Coach Line in El Reno, there will be five of those. They'll begin to run at 7:30 in the morning, return and running until about 1 o'clock. Like certainly everybody that has come to the 10 o'clock will have gotten back to Perry Plaza. Don't want to leave anybody stranded. Staff from Parks and Street will be on hand to assist with parking at Perry Plaza. We certainly appreciate them being there. After the morning run, buses from Perry Independent School District will also be there to help, so we appreciate their help as well. There'll be signs around the city directing folks to Perry Plaza. We tried to get some large direction signs from other sources, but they were not available. There will be parking on the outside of the cemetery for those who wish to drive their personal vehicle, but we're not allowing any guest vehicles inside the park, inside the cemetery. Only procedural vehicles will be allowed. At the gate of the cemetery, there will be two ditch witch vans to help move folks to the pavilion and move from the pavilion, so we appreciate ditch witch helping with that as well. The service will probably be approximately one hour in length, and it's at the pavilion. There will be extra chairs available, and we'll also have some porta potties out there. Multiple veteran motorcycle clubs and media will be present as well. Because we got rained out Friday, cemetery staff and street staff worked yesterday to get us up to where they were happy with the appearance of the cemetery, so we certainly do appreciate them working on their holiday. Any questions? I don't think I've ever wished for it to rain real hard. It's not the thing so far, oh, but we'll get through it, and, oh, I also wanted to say that Tonka and Pawnee Fire Department will also be providing mutual aid, so there'll be extra folks to help in case something happens. Fire will be there, police will be there as well. We think we've got it prepared.
Please convey our appreciation to the city staff for their extra work in beautifying the cemetery and making us all proud.
I will do that. Thank you very much for that. It does look very good today.
Any other, thank you. Any other questions for Larry? Thank you, Larry. Move to item seven, discussion and consider approval of the payment of $5,668 to Cowen Group Engineering LLC for the Perry TDK Trail final design.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Bond.
Yes.
Dillbeck.
Yes.
Payher.
Yes.
Marshall.
Here.
White.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Item number eight, consider approval of the following pavement to MKVC Engineering for Professional Services rendered through August 13th, 2019. $3,471.08][S01] for stream embankment collapse effort, including trip to Perry, 2019 drainage issues, East Boundary Alley, 7th Street sidewalk estimate/exhibit, $334.69 for construction support, trip to Perry to review AT&amp;T conflict on Grove Street, reviewed pavement patching on Ridgecrest and Oak Ridge. And this would all be work that's already been completed. This is just to approve payment.
Motion to approve payment for MKVC Engineering.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Dixie?
Bond.
Yes.
Dillbeck.
Yes.
Payher.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Item number nine, discussion and consider approval of the application for payment number two in the amount of $60,564.50 to the North Central Construction to be paid with local funds for construction services for the Phase 3 Master Sewer Project sewer line replacement, CDVG number 17299-18 project.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Dixie?
Bond.
Yes.
Dillbeck.
Yes.
Payher.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. We're up to item number 10, consider approval of application for payment number two to Utility Technology Services, Inc., pursuant to the schedule of values on the AMI Water Electric Metering System project in the amount of $224,380, pursuant to the certification of city employees to be presented in writing at the meeting. Anything that needs to be talked about here, Larry?
We're good.
We're good. I did get signatures from Will Sheets, Brian Wigley, and Autumn Giordo and myself. We all have evaluated it from our different perspectives and agree with it.
Move to approve payment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Dixie?
Bond.
Yes.
Dillbeck.
Yes.
Payher.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Morrell. Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Item number 11, notice of water plant flow meter struck by lightning and emergency declared to purchase and receive replacement flow meter as quickly as possible. Larry?
As your background says, we had a lightning strike that took out our flow meter, actually froze it, so that we couldn't adjust it. We couldn't decide it was at the level it was going to be until we replaced it. This is important piece of equipment. It looked like it was going to be five to six weeks before we could get a replacement, but the supplier did have one in stock, so we said, send it on down. So this is a quote of $10,640 plus $950 freight. This is a 12-inch flow meter, so it's a big deal. So couldn't wait. We just decided we'd go ahead and declare an emergency and bring this to you at your time. We are glad that we had some kind of quote to present to you tonight.
Thank you, Larry. Are there any questions of Larry? What would the council like to do with this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Dixie?
Bond.
Yes.
Dillbeck.
Yes.
Payher.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Item 12. I've been wanting to read this one. I don't even know what it means.
Well, it sounds mean.
I know, that's what I'm saying. 2004 Beast Recycler is again inoperable. A quote for the parts for repair has been received from Bandit Industries, Inc. So Larry, if you'll give us a little background on what the heck a beast recycler is.
It's a chipper. It's a chipper on steroids. It's a huge piece of equipment, and streets, Sam Harmon, bless his heart, they've taken this clutch out that they've had issues with for a long time, and the clutch is probably from on the other side, on the other side of Taylor right here. I mean, it's a huge piece of equipment. They have repaired it a couple of times. Finally, it went out again. I mean, we haven't had maybe four weeks between each repair, so Sam got in touch with the manufacturer in Remus, Michigan, who happened to have a special technician in St. Louis, so we asked him to come down, pay a visit for us, and tell us exactly what we needed to do. So this is the piece that he said we needed. In the past, we've sort of taken this piece out, put this piece in, and apparently this is one big giant piece that has to be put in, and he said it will be good from then on, so I'm not too sure we can quote him on that, but anyway, that's what he said. So it's nice that he was in St. Louis instead of up in Michigan or someplace like that, so.
He was going to install it.
We'll install it.
So this is the price for the cost?
That's just for the piece of equipment. That's correct. If you've been out there lately, or looked at, even been at the softball park, you can see there's a huge pile of brush out there. So this is something we need to have. We don't want to not take brush, so this is something that's very, very important, and if this will give us more years, that'd be great.
Does this go with any kind of warranty?
I do not believe so. We've had this piece of equipment for a good while.
I just didn't know if the piece is, so.
The main part.
Yeah.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call please. Dixie?
Bond.
Yes.
Dilbeck.
Yes.
Payher.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Item number 13, is there any new business to be brought before the council tonight? Seeing none, we'll move to item 14, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Bond.
Yes.
Dilbeck.
Yes.
Payher.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.